I don't know. This is Dan Colleton. This is Tyrone Williams. And I think where I'd like to start is where I left off with Mayor Pro Tem Colvin. What made you both decide to run for city council in District Two? And we'll start with Tyrone, since you're closest to me.
Well, Goldie, one thing happened to me. My brother actually got killed. He was walking on North Street where there's no sidewalks, there was no lighting. And just because he was considered homeless, he wasn't homeless because he could always live at the family house. But he looked homeless if you just saw him. He maybe acted homeless if you knew him. But he had a heart that would stop any person. He would go out and he would wreck the yards of the neighbors and then come outside in the yard to be wrecked. He'll go take the trash outside the road and the trash should be dumped or you forgot to take it out. And just like Joy here, Joy, I've been working with Joy and talking with Joy and she has the same heart. I actually look for the heart of people is what making me run. Joy, could you come up a minute? Is that all right with you, Goldie? Joy, I've been speaking with Joy and Joy was actually living in the, she was living in the
Hope Center.
The Hope Center and she's been Salvation Army. She's been now at another apartment that is red and roach infested. And I've been talking with the people down in Salvation Army, getting her back into which is the best facility to get in, which is going to open up very soon. And Joy, I just want you to just kind of tell a little bit about your road and how you see the homeless and how they've been falling short. And I have the same heart that she has. So I just want her to speak her piece. If that's all right.
For a second.
Yes.
We'll give you a minute.
Okay. Yes. I had never been without a home for, in my life and I am a veteran. So then you have other veteran issues that I won't go into tonight. But there was a breach of information, a breach of communication. And the resources were not presented to me and to other people that have no homes. So that is, that is my main concern is to get that breach of communication, which this young man over here was talking about, that there's gotta be that communication. You can have all the boards in the world, you can have all the promises there is. But if there's not that communication, there's a gap there. And to me, you can, like I said, you can have all the boards in the world and they're worthless if they're not doing what they are there to do. And I'm finding that out through my research of Fayetteville, that there is a big breach and it needs to stop. It needs to be filled with the right things. I'm new at this, so I'm not sure how that is. But I, like you said, I had been homeless and I still go to the street every, almost every day. And help in any direction that I can. I have found out this week about the library and all the information that is provided at the library through the access book and updated information. Just like the homeless shelter for the women was still on the paperwork as a men's shelter only. And what good is that?
Thank you, Joy. Thank you, Joy. Dan, what made you decide to run for city council in District Two?
Well, I tell you, I want to make a difference. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. And I feel I can make a difference. I know I can make a difference in people's lives. And when you know that, I feel you have a more obligation to do so. And so that's my primary driving force in this. I have experience in a lot of different areas. And I want to leverage that experience to make our city better, to finally have a chance to reach its potential. And not just for a few, but for everybody, for folks like Joy and folks all around our district and our city. And so there are areas that, population and areas of the city that have been left behind or traditionally underserved, that needs to change. We need to have better connectivity of those areas. And I think that's perhaps no more apparent than in District Two. As we all know, it's an extremely diverse district. It's a large district, covers a lot of ground. And it covers areas where there is a vast range of issues. You have issues such as Joy here. And you have other issues that are just important to other people, that you need a council person who understands that, that can reach and hear those concerns across the district. And I feel I can do that. So primarily, that's why I'm running.
I'll start with you on this question, Dan. City Councilman Deviere has always described District Two on my radio show as a district that has some of the wealthiest people in Fayetteville and some of the poorest people in Fayetteville. Whoever's elected this time around is going to be the city councilperson when our new baseball stadium opens up. The person that is elected this time around could be the city councilperson from District Two for many, many years going forward. So talk a little about the baseball stadium, the people that will be able to afford tickets to the baseball stadium, and the people in District Two who will not be able to afford a ticket. And let's start with how the baseball stadium is going to transform downtown.
You want me to start again?
Yes, you start.
Sure, absolutely. Correct. We have a world-class stadium about to be built in our downtown. There was a lot of work that was put in by the prior council to get that done. And a lot of effort put forth to make that happen, but it hasn't happened yet. And so we really need to see that through. We need to get this one right. That's going to take experienced leadership to do that. If we flound around this, if the overruns go out of control, if, you know, we don't get that stadium complete, that's the first step. The second step is getting that stadium to be successful. It is the potential to be a huge economic driver, not only in our downtown, but to the rest of our city. And if you look at other municipalities who had a stadium like this, that's been a success every time. But it has to be done right. And so I'm glad to see it come. I'm glad to see it into my district. But I want the benefits of that stadium to reach beyond downtown. I want the benefits of that stadium to reach throughout District Two. I want it to reach throughout the city and in the county. And that's why, as Mayor Pro Tem Mitch Colvin was saying, is we need that collaborative effort, not only on council, but with the county. And we need folks who know how to work together and see past our differences. We need folks who know how to come together and build consensus in order to be effective and be an effective leader to get things done. So as far as reaching, you mentioned ticket prices and things like that.
Not just ticket prices, but there are, in your district, there are those who will be able to afford a night at the game. But there are also thousands of people that will not be able to afford a ticket.
Absolutely. And I'm probably one who won't be able to afford it because I have four kids. So it might get a little costly and I'm not sure what the hot dogs run there. But absolutely, you know, that is going to be a treat for anybody who's able to go on. Certainly, there's always going to be people who are more privileged to be able to experience something like that and those who hopefully will get the opportunity. But I would like to see that stadium be more than just a baseball stadium. I like to see that venue be opened up for other things. And I think that's where all of us can take in that stadium. Not only the entertainment district that now is being created to encompass that stadium, as you know, Cool Springs District, Entertainment District, to help benefit from the growth of that stadium. But the stadium itself, I'd like to see it opened up for perhaps some Little League World Series that come to town. Perhaps some of the high school events that we can have in that stadium. Maybe some other concerts or venues or school functions that can be helped in that stadium so that other folks can take pride and enjoy that venue as well.
Thank you, Dan. Tyrone, the same question to you. If you were to become the city councilman for District Two, talk about the transformation that the baseball stadium will bring about downtown. And then talk about the different, I guess, the different folks you have in District Two, the haves and the have-nots. You know, J. Cole famously called Fayetteville a town of two different lifestyles.
Absolutely. Well, one of the great things that I bring to the table, Goldie, is I'll be able to connect with the sponsorships of the stadium. I think that's very important. Without the sponsor, that stadium, I don't believe we'll make it. Norfolk Tires is another baseball stadium in Norfolk area that I've actually been conversing with some individuals that had a great part in that stadium. It should be right on the water, downtown Norfolk, Virginia. And they have kind of given me the idea that without sponsorship, without the community coming out there, without the business getting very involved, downtown district getting involved, the stadium is going to be a very, very, very much of a problem for us. Because we, as the constituents and the city taxpayers, we have to make those budgets and things like that make. So we have to get every business, individual involved some kind of way. We gotta get their tags flying, the flags flying. We gotta get the businesses out there. We gotta also with those sponsorships be able to provide with the people that cannot get into the stadium. We gotta get a sponsorship, a company, a corporation, even sponsor daddy, get them to afford tickets that they need. So we need to get to the place. I mean, really, we gotta get to the place that the sponsors are actually taking this thing and carrying it through. Because I do not want that stadium to be a hole in the ground. I don't want it to be a flood zone with the water standing in the middle and it's just a bad source for the city. That would actually hurt us a lot. I will say this right here, he's absolutely right, though. We have to get the kids involved. We have to get more activities. And I will also thank the board, Mitch and Nat and all them. Because initially started, that contract with, the Astro has every activity that goes on that stadium, on that field, they had control of it. And they actually did not go through with that. They actually stopped the program. That's why it stopped for a little while. Because they wanted to get activity from the city involved. I talked with the Swamp Dogs. I got down there, I spoke with the guys that run the Swamp Dogs. And they have a lot of information that they've already created, things that they've done, projects they're working on. I actually asked, actually went down to Swamp Dogs and about fifteen hundred kids showed up and I was actually on the MC and I was Captain America saving Fayetteville, right? Yeah, Captain Fayetteville, they called me. It was great. And we gave our kids and we gave our little awards to all the kids. But we have to already look at entities that's already running, already operating, already, it's not, this is nothing new. This has already been done before, nothing new in the sun. We gotta get with the people. It's already seen it operate, made it operate. The Swamp Dogs, I know that's another stadium that's in Fayetteville. It's also in my district. But I gotta take care of them too and make sure they don't get flooded under also in this whole process. So we gotta come together as a unit, as a family, as a corporation, as business people, and also the ticket holders, that they can come to the table and make sure this project works without me, you, Dan, and every citizen that can't afford a ticket. A sponsor should have that ticket ready to hand out.
Thank you. I should just say that we discussed time limits before we began. And we decided that because we have sort of a casual forum, that we were not going to institute time limits. Both candidates agreed that they would keep their remarks to three to four minutes. And I just wanted to let everybody know, that's why we don't have a stopwatch app tonight. Let me ask you about stormwater and start with you. Stormwater is a problem. District Two, some of the worst stormwater. If you talk to Clarence Briggs, who owns AIT, he would tell you that some of the worst ponding happens is in his parking lot, right across the street from City Hall. And it has been a huge problem for him, as it has been for so many people, not only in District Two, but Bobby Hurst has talked about it in District Five, Ted Moan has talked about it in District Eight. It appears to be a sixty million dollar fix. We have talked about maybe hiking the stormwater fee. City Councilman Bill Crisp said, "That's a Band-Aid." That's not nearly enough, that would not generate enough money to even make a dent in the problem. So if you were elected to city council, what do we do about our stormwater problems here in Fayetteville?
Well, one thing, Goldie, we gotta really do is we gotta bite the bullet on that bond that needs to be taken place. Nobody wants to prove that, put that on the books. And I do understand they kind of push it down the road and kick it down the road. But one thing we can do is start some preventive maintenance. We can make sure those stormwater drains are cleaned out. I was riding down the street the other day with another constituent that lives in, actually has a business on William Street. And he said, "Look at my, look at my drain. Look at my drain. It's all clogged up." I said, "Man, we gotta get the firemen or whoever out there, whoever's in control that can be out there, to wash that stuff down, to clean it down, to try to get it where that stuff won't stop up at a little bit of rain take place." We gotta put in place also like little, what you might call drainways. Building up an area and then also land use and also getting the water to be diverted in certain ways that go into ponds, rivers and things like that, where it won't actually come into our homes, our businesses and actually flood us out. We gotta start looking at preventive, preventive ways that we can make a difference in the community until we get that bond in place to do it the right way. We gotta put in sump pumps if we need to. We gotta do whatever we need to keep that person in our home. Because I know what mold does to a home. It only, it does not displace the person out of the home. You see that Old Wilmington Road going on. Where I've actually went out there and volunteered, did the work and actually bought material in my pocket. I know what goes on with those kind of, those kind of projects. Not only displace the individual out the home, not only does it damage the home, but it's actually a growing fungus in that house. And sometime, ten years later, it might show back up. So we gotta get serious about water. It's going to rain. And I know it's going to rain, but we gotta prepare for the rain. And I believe that we actually have to do that to make a difference in the community.
Thank you, Tyrone. Dan, same question to you. Stormwater, it's an expensive fix. How do we get that money to do it?
Well, I'll tell you, I'm going to stay on topic there. Mold is a problem. Tyrone's right. You know, I'm a chiropractor physician. I operate as a executive director of physical medicine. But I also happen to own a licensed general contracting company. So we've done a lot of remediation work as part of that. And so it's a problem when you get into a home and you get this mold and sometimes you really have to tear it down to the studs. And even then, it could be a problem depending on the foundation issues. But, so we don't want to displace those families, but we can't always control Mother Nature either. And so when we get a storm like Hurricane Matthew that came in and the amount of rain, and then we were already prepped from the storms. If you remember the weekend before, the ground was saturated, the water tables were high. We're never going to be able to create a system that's going to be able to handle that type of volume of rain. But I think we could do better and we need to do better. This is something that is not a sexy political topic in terms of selling it, right? Otherwise, we would have the funding and we would already have it taken care of. But it's something that needs to be addressed and it's gone on for too long. So I know that, and you're going to have to forgive me on the numbers because I'm not quite on council yet. Or hopefully, you know, one of us will be, but I have tried to research these. Right now, I think we have about twenty million dollars in active stormwater projects going on, actively, twenty million in the city. But I think the estimate that the council in the last session has come up with is two hundred and fifteen million is what they're estimating is needed. Not sixty. That's a lot of money. And we're going to have to find a way to do that. But that's what our current needs are, folks. And so one of the things I want to do on council is be able to leverage my planning ability. As I was the chair for the Planning Commission of the City of Fayetteville for some time. We need to look at the growth that's occurring. We have a lot of growth that's occurring right now and that is great. I know that Mr. Williams says he's not a fan of smart growth, but I am. I think that we need smart growth. I think that we need smart growth in the fact that we don't need more urban sprawl. But we need growth that benefits the city in a way that increases its tax revenue and is less taxing on the city to maintain the services. And part of those services are stormwater. And so when you have a sprawling urban environment, it becomes very difficult and costly to maintain that as opposed to a more centralized city. And so part of the issue is going to be the planning of that development. And then we need to forecast the future needs of that development so that we don't end up with these same stormwater issues that we're dealing with today. How do we get that money? There's a lot of ways to discuss that. And that's, again, going to be a collaborative effort on how to do that through council. But it does need to be taken care of.
Dan, I'm going to start with you on the UDO. There are certain candidates who are being financed by builders in Fayetteville, and that is not an unusual thing in any city. When you go to most cities, you will find that builders are big donors when it comes to political candidates. But when candidates start talking about ripping up the UDO, that's when I think some people have questions and get a little concerned. Now, the UDO is a seven-hundred-page document and I think Mitch and Kirk would both tell you that it could probably be thinned out a bit. Talk a little about the UDO. How important is it to have development standards, especially with all the development going on? And if you were elected to city council, what would your stance be on the Unified Development Ordinance?
Absolutely. The city needs a UDO. There's no question about that. I am firm on that. The city has needed one. What we also need to realize, though, is that a UDO that we have needs to constantly be evaluated because we are constantly changing as a city and needs will change with it. So we need to constantly assess that and make the corrections that's needed. We had staff come to us a number of times on the Planning Commission to take that document that is very, very large and tweak it. And so I think we need to continue to address those issues. I think we need to have socially conscious development, though. I think we need to have development that is aesthetically pleasing. And so I do not want to see things in the UDO change that is going to leave us with a less desirable place to live and recreate in. So as far as the UDO goes, we do need a UDO, but we need to make it more business-friendly. We do need to have development. We talk about economic development. We talk about things occurring economically in our city. We need to understand that there has to be a happy medium there. Now, we'll look into it further, but I know right now that there are some very restrictive clauses in there that may or may not be needed. Those need to be assessed. We, again, have to have a balance. What I would like to see is really a collaborative effort from city staff, council people, as well as some professionals in the building community, come together to discuss that so that everybody has input. And hopefully, everybody can hear each other and we come to a, again, a consensus that makes sense for the city.
Thank you, Dan. Tyrone, same question. How do you feel about the UDO? Does it need to be torn up and do we need to start over? Do the builders call the shots in this town when it comes to things like retention ponds that are expensive? Talk about the UDO.
Well, Goldie, the EDO is a, is a policy that's been put in place by a census of people that's got together. And we do have to follow the law. But this incidence that's been, like you talked about being on the Economic Development Board and STD Chair, where we have projects such as Greenwood, where we have modular homes going in subdivisions that's completely outside of EDO. So these variances are taking place all over town. I don't know why, but they are. We have infield taking place up in Haymont Hill up there and where you tear down a perfectly good house and you put two houses there, which is the lower the value of the neighborhood. So EDO is very important. It has to be put in place and it has to be followed. If it's going to change, it has to be done from numbers of people, not just one or two, from a planning board or a head of a planning board making decisions kind of rogue, I might say. So also down in Old Wilmington Road where you have, I'm just going to say Habitat of, Habitat of, of Four Humanity Houses been put in flood zone, knowing that what is going to come and it's already ten feet under the sea level. We have to understand that we have this, not smart growth, but smart development. We cannot continue to go on the way that we're going and think that we're going to be successful. It's just not working. EDO does need to be changed. It need to be put in place and it need to be followed to a T. All these variances for different developments that you say that's been happening, we need to take a closer look at that.
All right. We've got about five minutes left here. So let me ask the two of you about something that is on everybody's mind here in Fayetteville. I asked Mayor Pro Tem Colvin about it, and that is public safety. Again, I think Mitch made a great point that if you don't feel safe in your town, the numbers don't really matter to you. You don't care if property crime is down and violent crime is up. If you're afraid to go to the Walmart or you're afraid to go to a restaurant, the numbers just don't matter. So talk a little about public safety. Talk a little about what Chief Hawkins may need, what you're willing to give her should you become the next city councilman of District Two.
Absolutely. I just spoke to Chief Hawkins about two days ago. We had sat down up here and we talked about what was going on in the community and how we can make it better. She's a very intelligent and capable person of doing the job and it will get done. She started to line things up and division the people and tackling different, different areas. She signed three cabinets for three different areas and where the problems are. She's already, she's attacking the problems. So she definitely can get the job done. But what we have to do is we have to do as a community, join forces with the police department. The police department did not get those forty-seven different officers. They did not get enough officers to really police the city without the citizens' help. We have to come together as a community. I'll tell you right now, if I see something, I got nine-one-one on speed dial. I'm calling someone out to the scene. And I'm going to stay there and I'm going to face that person and with the police officer, we're going to make a difference in the community. If you stand up for your community, your community could be standing up. If you run away from your community and don't say anything, it'll fall down. So we need to come together as a community, together, standing tall. And all the communities in Fayetteville would be a safe place to live. And the individuals that's walking the street, that's on the street, they would have a safe place to live. And that's what I believe in. We come together as a unit and we'd be a strong body.
Thank you. Dan, same question to you on public safety.
We all deserve a safe place to live. We all deserve safe neighborhoods and streets for our kids. We do have an uptick in crime and violent crime across the nation and Fayetteville is mimicking that pattern. That doesn't mean that we should shut that responsibility of correcting that just because it's a national trend. We should do better. We're an all-American city. I believe we're an all-American city that should lead the nation because we truly can. I'm very passionate about this. My wife and I, when we moved into our local neighborhood, we're hearing a lot of complaints about the crime, about the condition of the city, about this and that. We were approached to take over the neighborhood watch in that area. We talked about it, said this will be a lot of work. If we're going to do this, we really need to make it a more effective community watch than traditionally what has been done. And our vision was to bring the community watch to where the community really watches each other and comes out and looks out for each other. So we decided to take that community watch and form an organization that was based around social engagement and community involvement. We grew that from four members to over four thousand now. And in our neighborhood, it's hard to lose a dog. Now, I'm here tonight because one of our little canines got out. I'm not so concerned because I know when I get home and we get on our pages, that dog will be with a neighbor. That didn't happen before we started that. If we can't lose a dog, what do you think happened to the crime when people start looking out for their neighbors at that level? It just takes one person to make that difference. It just takes some effort in the community, much like Pam Carter, who's here tonight with the B Street Coalition. They're out there walking that neighborhood every day. I've been out there multiple times with them to see what they're dealing with. Their issues in that neighborhood watch and that community are far different than in ours. But they're no less important and they need to be addressed. That's why we're out there every day. That's why I don't take the time at the polls every day as people come in. It's not because I don't want to be there to greet my constituents or people coming through, but it's because I'm still doing the work. I'm still there at these community watches every day. We were just at Brookwood and Evans Hill where they had a litany of problems still going on. We were able to get those corrected within two days for them and address some of those problems that have been lingering. You can't do that if you're not there. You can't do that if you're not involved. You can't do that with words. It has to be actions. So when we talk about the crime in Fayetteville, we need to take action. Now, Chief Hawkins, I think, is going to be a fantastic chief. She's a former Buckeye like myself. She actually lived in an area in Georgia like myself. So I'm very familiar with the community that she policed and was there grooming herself for our city. I think that we need to continue the prior efforts that former Chief Medlock and interim Chief Kelly did with the community policing. I think we need to expand upon that. I think that we need to take that concept and really double down on it because it's going to take a community, just like it did in ours, just like it's going to take in the B Street and just like it's going to take in the city. It's going to take that investment, that social capital being built. And we can't do that alone. We can't do that simply by just more officers or more money at the problem. We need to come together as a city. And that can only be done if those efforts are put forth. And so I hope that Chief Hawkins will take a look. Certainly, whatever she assesses her needs are. That's why we have her in place. She went through a strong vetting process to get the best candidate. We need to listen to what she tells us. And we need to have trust that we pick the right person and do everything we can to provide her with the tools and the resources necessary to do her job in a safe and effective manner.
All right. I promised I would keep this to an hour. So I will give each one of you two minutes to talk about maybe something that I didn't ask you about or just to do a close. Dan, we're going to start with you.
Sure. And hopefully, I won't take the whole two minutes. As I said, I got a dog that hopefully I'll be able to come home to and I gotta get the kids to bed because I know they're probably up until little Spike gets home. In closing, my name's Dan Colleton. I'm running for District Two City Council. We've been through a couple months of campaigning now and we're about to come to a close. The one thing I can say about this is that it's been a very positive experience for me. It's allowed me to get out there and meet a lot of great people. It's been an experience for not just me, but my family who is often with me. I like to see the best candidate chosen for any position. But one can only do that if they get to know their candidate. So I want to commend these people who are here today. We're small, but we're an engaged crowd here tonight. I like to commend everybody who watches this either tonight or on the video online and really listen to what's being said and look at where we want to go and make those decisions based on that. Make those decisions by being informed, not just seeing, but actually hearing and listening and being engaged. That's what I'd like to see happen. And if I'm their choice for District Two, I can tell you that I may not always tell you what you want to hear, but I will always tell you the truth. And I will show up to the job and I will be prepared for the job and I will do the work that needs to be done. And in addition to that, I will be your advocate on council and your voice on that council. And in addition to that, I will be your advocate on council and your voice on that council.
Thank you, Dan. Tyrone?
Well, you know, I wanna go on the record here, Goldie. Whoever wins this race stand, let us still work together in the community. And whoever wins, just uh, I don't know, a phone call away, the uh, task force uh, work together and trying to build something for the community, I'm all for it. Uh, I'm here for you and I hope you'll be here for me and the B Street Coalition. I got to knock your door this weekend, actually, B Street.
I saw the sign.
You saw the signs, good, good, good. Your neighbors didn't know you, I'm sorry. But, but it's okay. Um, everything is gonna work together for the good, for the people, that's what we all strive to do. So I just want us to come together as a community, as a unit, as a group. And I know that I'll be out there beating the streets, I'll be out there in every event, I'll be out there working the uh, neighborhoods, I'll be out there. I walk with the B Street uh, Coalition also, and uh, they, they, they are a good group, they do some good work. But uh, we got to get everything tighter, everything nailed down, everything in place for actually move forward in the community due to the work that need to be done. And I will say I am the best candidate for the job by far, cause not because I thought of this, read a book, I've done the work, I've been there before. I have the plans already written out of things that we need to be doing. I did the research, I've been in the community, listening and knowing how the mirror things to come together to get the outcome. I will be the next city council of District Two, because I know and I feel in my heart that I'm the best candidate. And it will, it will work out for the community and we'll work together as a unit, as one, as a body. So vote District Two, Tyrone Williams, for your next city council. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you, thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Mitch Colvin, and thank you for coming. And uh, Laverne, thank you for inviting me to do this.